Yes, our next chapter - Heat. What is heat? How to define this word - heat? Heat - it is a form of an energy first of all. We have the different forms of energies like light energy, sound energy, electric energy, magnetic energy, like that so many types of forms of energies are there, in that one of form is heat. How to define this term? See, if we touch this object, it is an object, if we touch this object, we give the, we say the, we can say the nature of this object, that means is it hot or coldness? Cold. The either hotness or coldness of the body is said to be what we call heat. The intensity of hotness or coldness is called as temperature. How it is, we can say with heat, how much intensity is there that is expressed by temperature, that is the difference in between heat and temperature, let us see. First of all, heat and temperature. It explains about the either hotness or coldness of an object is called as heat. The intensity of hotness or coldness is said to be temperature. Heat, it is the cause. But temperature, it is the result. This is the difference between heat and temperature, major difference. The measurement of heat is called as calorimetry. Calorie, it is the unit to express the temper- heat, so that is why measurement of heat is called as calorimetry. Measurement of temperature is called as thermometry. Therm means temperature, metry means measurement. Measurement of temperature, thermometry, measurement of heat is called what we say calorimetry. What are the units to express the heat? TGS unit to express the heat energy is calorie. Its SI unit is joule. Its CGS unit degree Celsius, other units foreign heat and temperature SI unit is Kelvin. It is the SI unit, this is the CGS, another one more unit is degree Fahrenheit. What is the relation between these two calorie and joule? One calorie is equal to 4.186 joules which is equal to 4.2 joules. Here. Heat is the form of energy which flows from one body to other body or high intensity point to low intensity point due to the difference is temperature between the bodies. The amount of heat contained in the body depends on the mass of the body. If work W is performed and heat produced is H, then W by H is equal to G. That will discuss now. Here one calorie is equal to 4.186 joules, and just now we discuss. And some more information regarding this. One calorie is 4.186 but one kilocalary is equal to 4186 joules or one kilocalary is equal to 4.2 into 10 to the power of 3 joules. This is the relation between calorie and joule. Here kilocalary unit Kcal means kilocalary, this unit is used to express the calorific value of the calorific values of food stuff, important. Food stuff calorific values are expressed in kilocalories. Right? What is meant by calorific value? Calorific value, it is defined as substance. Yes, the substance which is how much amount of energy can be liberated or produced, that is called as calorific value. Calorific value is defined as how much amount of energy can be produced by the substance that is said to be calorific value. These calorific values calorific values are vary from substance to substance. It is not same for all the substances, it varies. For example, if we take the rice, it produce the 345 kilocalary energy for 100 gram quantity. If we take or consume the wheat, it produce 340 kilocalary for 100 grams. Ground nut, it produce the 567 kilocalary for 100 grams. Cow milk, it gives the 67 kilocalary for 100 gram. Puffalo milk, it gives 117 kilocalary for 100 gram, like this. Banana, it gives the 74 kilocalary for 100 gram, like this. If we take one substance for 100 gram quantity, it gives this one, it gives, rice gives 345, wheat gives 340, ground nut gives 567, like this, different substances give the different types of calorific values. Similarly, some fuels also. Fuels, these also produce the different types of energies. When we heat them or when we burn them, they produce some amount of energy. For example, cow dung, pet- pedaleda, pidikalantanga, cow dung, it gives the 6000 to 8000 kilojoule per kg energy. Coal, it produce the 17000 to 22000 kilojoule per kg energy. Similarly, CNG compressed natural gas, it produce the 40000 50000 kilojoule per kg energy. LPG, liquefied petroleum gas, not liquid petroleum gas, liquefied petroleum gas, it produce the 55000 kilojoule per kg energy. Hydrogen, it is the 21st century fuel, it gives the 1 lakh 50000 kilojoule per kg energy. Which means, which of the following gives the more amount of energy? Hydrogen, that is why hydrogen is called as 21st century fuel. How to measure the calorific values? Calorific values of these substances, it is, these are measured by the Pampu calorimeter. Pampu calorimeter is used to measure the calorific values of the fuels and food stuffs. What is its purpose? To measure the calorific values of the fuels and food stuffs. For this purpose, we use this one. Except fuel and food stuff or other than the fuel and food stuff, which of the following device is used to measure the calorific value or specific heat of the substance? Yes, we use the calorimeter. Calorimeter used to measure the specific heat or calorific value, specific heat or calorific values of the substance other than the fuel and food stuff. Here one more important word. How many calorific values are required for a healthy human being per a day? The required calorific values for a healthy human being per a day the required calorific values for a healthy human being per a day. First one, in rural area people, in rural areas, required calorific values are 2400 kilocalary. In urban or towns or cities, 2100 kilocalary. Is it clear? Why, why this difference is required? Because their physical work or they require the more amount of energy for to do the physical work, that is why this difference is required. Now. Another one is calorimeter. Calorimeter, what is the working principle of calorimeter? Calorimeter working principle is the method of mixture. What is that method of mixture? That is, mixture means if two or more than two substances are combined with each other, that is called as mixture. How to define this method of mixture? If both are contact with each other, this hot substance lose the heat energy, at the same time cold substance observe the heat energy. It is called as method of mixture. So, heat lost by hot substance is equal to equal to heat gained by cold substance. This is the working principle of calorimeter. Now, heat is a, it is a form of an energy we know. It is a form of an energy, that is why it transfers the heat energy from high intensity point to low intensity point. Why the heat transfer from one body to another body or one part of the body to another part of the body? See, for example, this is the one object. If we supply the heat energy, it is heat transfer from this part to this part, part A to part another part B. Or if it is heating, the substance which is filled in this substance, that is also what happens, receive the heat energy from this source, from the container, that is why this is called as transfer of energy. So according to difference in the temperatures, heat transfer from one body to another body or from one pot to another pot. Methods of transmission of heat energy. There are three types. Number one, heat conduction. Second one, heat convection. Third one, heat radiation. There are the three methods. What is heat conduction? See now. It is the process of transfer of heat energy. Here, it is a container. If we supply the some amount of heat energy to the container, what happened? This heat energy received by the container. Slowly this heat energy transfer from bottom of the container to this point upper layer, it transfer like this. From one point to another point, heat is transferred in the object or in the container. So any change in the position of their particles, there is no change in the position. That is why this type of or this kind of transfer of heat energy is called as heat conduction. In case, if we take the one object in the container, due to the increasing of heat energy, supplying heat energy, material also receive the heat energy from the source and later it reaches from one end to another end. This kind of transfer of heat energy from one end to another end also called as heat conduction. There is no displacement of the particles. You have to remember only one thing, transfer of heat energy without any movement or without any displacement of the particles, heat transfer from one to another point is called as heat conduction. Clear? So according to transfer of heat energy, materials are classified into two types. They are number one, heat conductors or thermal conductors. These are allow the heat energy through them. This is. Example for heat conductors are thermal conductors, yes, what we call metals or solids. These are the example for heat or thermal conductors. Conductors, in this, one more type is their poor conductor of heat energy. Some of the materials slowly allow the heat energy through them, that kind of materials are called as poor conductors. Example for poor conductors, air and ice etc. Second one, thermal insulators or heat insulators. These do not allow the heat energy through them. Example, wood, rubber, plastic, paper, cloth, etc. In the metals especially, silver, copper, gold, aluminium, iron, mica etc. These are the thermal conductors or heat conductors. Among this, the most important one is there. Among these, the best heat conductor or thermal conductor is silver, most, most important one this is. Which of the following is the best thermal conductor or heat conductor? Silver. Easy. Right? This is the classification of materials according to transfer of heat energy. Now come to the point, heat convection. Transfer of heat energy by the displacement or movement of the particles. Here, transfer of heat energy by the movement of particles is called as heat convection. Heat convection is classified into, especially heat convection is occurred in the liquids and gases, important one. Transfer of heat energy and liquids, it is the best example for transfer of heat energy in liquids and gases, it is the best example for heat convection. Heat convection is also classified into two types. They are preconvection. Preconvection, it is defined as transfer of heat energy by naturally means particles, by displacement of particles, heat transfer like this. Either vertical, up or down direction, downward direction, upward direction or downward direction. Next, forced convection. If we use the any other devices to send the or movement of the pot for move the particles, for that purpose of transfer of heat energy is called forced convection.
Palavantanga heatne transfer chenchalamanedi, like steam engineeraitavundho, ikkada force actchesto undi. A type of transfer name antaru, transfer of heat energy, forced convection anta. Ikkada dinini, advection ani maro definitionga chavutaru. What is advection? Very simple. Ikkada verticaliga, paikeekinikapendavulu jarutavunte, advection it is the transfer of heat energy along the horizontal direction. These are the methods of transfer of heat energy from the according to heat convection. Next, heat radiation. Medium is not required to propagate the heat energy from one point to another point. So, it is defined as transfer of heat energy, thermal radiation or heat radiation. Here, sun rays reach the earth surface. By what method sun rays reach the earth surface? Yes, this method is said to be heat radiation or thermal radiation also, whatever it is. You take thermal radiation or heat radiation. How much time it will takes? Sun rays reach the earth surface about 8 minutes, 20 seconds time which is equal to 500 seconds time it will takes. You may observe this in our practice also. Heat transfer. Yes, here, it transfer the, these process of, this process of heat flow are collectively known as heat transfer. There are three modes of heat transfer namely, conduction, convection, radiation, now only we discussed already. Few example. Conduction, in this process, heat transfer from one place to other place by the successive vibrations of the particles of the medium without bodily movement. Yet twenty movement lekundane, particles and yet twenty, what nucho, vaka particle nuundi, inko particle heat transferavutundi. It is example for in solids, heat transfer takes place by conduction. Metals are in general good conductor of heat, various brick, concrete, felt, ice, hood, sawdust, paper, air, glass, cloth or bad conductor of heat. These are also called poor conductor of heat also. This is why ice is packed in sawdust to save it from being melt. Adi, payana manaku, ice nani meltavukunda, encha starandi, sawdust manaku rampappotu leda, unkapottantutam, adi vedanigalarisani thi. According to the process of conduction, materials are divided into two main categories as follows. Ikkada choodandi, handle nani thendu teeskuntamuunte, it is the insulator, heat transfer in the handles, that is why we take this. But adhe frying pan, evenne kuda ela untai, annapudu heat conduction nature kalivunta. Thermal conductors, see, heat transfer, slowly transfer like this. Thermal insulators, heat transfer here, see, plastic, foam, here heat doesn't travels. Convection, see, transfer of heat energy from bottom to top or surface of the water, from surface of the water to bottom like this, heat transfer. It is the warm particle moving upward direction, but cool molecules are coming from upward to downward. Aduguna heatena particle, warm particles ani, paike displacedavutai. Paynakelina, a particle ani, di coolena, pudu malli kindu transferavutunta. Ee vidanga transfer of heat energy in the liquids is called as convection. Next. Daytime gamaninchandi ikkada? Daytime lo, heat nani thi, ekkunnu chakka transferavutun, choodanana? In daytime, land warmer, warm air travel from land to sea water. In that time, cool sea breeze coming from sea water to surface of the water. Daytime lo, high temperature valla, heat transfer from land to sea water. In that time, cool form of sea breeze, it comes from surface of the water to earth. Next one, night time parisilna chayandi? Nighttime lo, air, warm air coming from the surface of the sea water to land.
Cool form of air or cool land breeze travel from surface of the earth to surface of the water. Edi, ee vidangga heat eppu transfer avutundi ante, midday avute neemo, land to surface of the sea water. Nighttime lo neemo, warm water to, warm water ani twenty, edaita undu, adi sea to earth cheshtundu naana. Very small difference, adi identify chayandi. Right, these are the different types of example. Radiation kudi choodanana. Akkara earth no, ee yoka hands ki, ayoka hoodu nucho, heat ani thi la travel avutundi. Akkara yemena medium unda, ledhu, ante medium not required for propagation of heat energy. And adhe vidangga sun rays reach the earth's surface, ela avutunai ante, due to this one only, right? See, it is the, how much time it will takes? Five hundred seconds time this. Next question, by what method, most important naana. By what method globe of the earth will be warming? Option A, heat conduction or thermal conduction. Option B, heat convection. Option C, heat radiation. Option D, all of the above. See, how the earth will be increased, the earth's temperature will be increases, important. Please focus. This is the sun, listen carefully. Sun rays enter from sun rays reach the earth's surface by the method of heat radiation. This is the third method, we know. Now only we discuss, earth has the four parts, let us suppose. Out of the four parts, three parts covered with the water. We know. Sun rays are incidents on the surface of the water and also surface of the earth. If it is directly incident on the surface of the earth, that method is called heat radiation. Okay, number one. Second one, in at nights, temperature of the water is more than the temperature of the soil or surface of the earth. Due to that, warm air travel from surface of the sea water to surface of the earth. So, this transfer of heat energy by the movement of the particles is called as heat convection. So, it is the second method that is heat convection. Earth has the three different layers. Name of them, earth crust, mantle, core. From the surface of the earth to center of the earth or at the core, inner core, the temperature at the inner core is six thousand degrees Celsius. At six thousand degrees Celsius temperature, all the available metals are at molten state or liquid state. This liquid state or molten state of the metals at the center of the earth is called as magma. After explosion of the, at the center, from the center, it splits the particles. That is nothing but the cooled, expelled metals is called as lava. The expelled metal after cooling, that is said to be lava. The molten state or liquid state at high temperature, that is called as magma. Now, it is expelled. Later, sunlight incident on its surface, heat is transferred from this edge to towards the earth. This kind of transfer of heat energy is called heat conduction. It is the metal, transfer of heat energy in the metal, it is the example for heat conduction. So, how many methods are there? There are the three methods, conduction, convection, radiation. Three methods presence in the globe of the earth warming or in the process of earth warming, three pro, three methods included. They are conduction, convection and radiation. So, answer is all of the above. So, which of the following is, following gases called global warming gas, carbon dioxide. T O two is the global warming gas, right? Due to this, what happens? Earth will be warming. This is the question, repeated question in previous competitive examination. Also, carbon dioxide, methane, other nitrous oxide, etc. Also responsible for the warm of, warming of the earth.